We're gonna have the swearing in of Mel Witherspoon. He could stand. Roosevelt Benjamin is representing Mel's family. I'm gonna hear you.
Okay.
Can you raise your hand? If you'd like to. I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
obey and defend
obey and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will discharge
and that I will discharge
the duties of my office
the duties of my office
as City of Erie, Pennsylvania
as City of Erie, Pennsylvania
and City Council member
City Council member
with fidelity
with fidelity. Thank you.
Okay, roll call of the City Council meeting, January 17th, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Ms. Flores, Mr. Brzezinski, Councilmember Nelson, Trup, Councilmember Witherspoon, and we have Councilmembers Shaw and Titus joining by Zoom. Please stand for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Alrighty, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, U.S. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of the January 3rd, 2024, City Council meeting as amended and bills for payment on January 19th, 26th, and February 2nd. Councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Trup, Witherspoon, and Flores. Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Alrighty, we will be moving on to public comment. I would ask the media to please line up on the left side of the facing the stage. So, left side of the room for you guys. And then citizens to line up on the right on the right side, if you would like to speak, to avoid any confusion. What time is it on the left side? The media. You're on that side. I would like the public to clearly state your name and municipality for the record. You have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Steve Sebastian. I'm the environmental and infrastructure representative from Stevenson Equipment. All of you were sent an email, hopefully to allow you to understand what my attendance is here for. It looks like it might be a little bit preemptive. This is in regards to the purchase of your sewer cleaning truck for the Sewer Department. I'm at a loss right now, and I came here for some guidance and direction who I can speak to in this matter. In the summer this year, I met with Mr. Zisk and AJ. I apologize, I'm not gonna try to pronounce his last name because I won't do a very good job of that. But I met with those two gentlemen. I asked the protocol, how to present and demonstrate this piece of equipment to the city. I followed that protocol. We set up an entire day for me not only to bring the equipment in, but also, I know service of this equipment has been an issue for the city in the past. Therefore, I brought in our road service crew. I also brought in a world-class nozzle manufacturer with us because we wanted to show the city that it wasn't, our service doesn't end at the end of the hose of this truck. And I don't want to get into the weeds because I know this is really kind of a topic that's not that familiar with everybody in the room. The concern comes is this. So, after I presented the equipment, then I sat down with members of the Sewer Department to construct, let's call it a paper truck, put the truck together as they wanted it per their specifications. That was completed. Then, we put a number to that, obviously, and then it was presented back to the city. I was told this evening that you were all gonna vote on the purchase of this truck. The numbers that I would be given was that the requisition for that truck was in the number of $651,000. The truck that I proposed to the city demonstrated to their liking and also spec to their liking is $525,000. The difference is what I'm here to find, to try to get a direction or an answer to, only for this matter. These trucks, they do three things, and I'm sorry, this is the best way I can describe it. They suck, they squirt, and they transport it. Okay, that's what they do. And in doing that, both the manufacturers in question, the one that I represent and the truck that is supposedly being put up for requisition, we both use the exact same manufacturer for water pump. We both use, so that's the squirt part. The suck part comes in how we generate vacuum. And the manufacturer that we both use is exactly the same. So, the suck, the squirt is exactly the same on both of these trucks. As far as chassis is concerned, I put this truck on a freight liner only because I was told the city is in need and in need now, and that is a stock unit. I believe the truck that is being put forth to you is also on a freight liner. That only leaves us with a few other small things. If there's other options on the truck that's going up for requisition, I was never told of that. I built this truck exactly as the people in the Sewer Department told me to. So, essentially, what I'm here to ascertain is, what do I do next? That's a considerable amount of money. And I understand that there's 31 flavors ice cream, but that better be some really good vanilla for $126,000 in difference when the heart, soul, and the brain of the truck is exactly the same, even the chassis. I'm done.
Sorry, during public comments, we don't get to make, we don't make responses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Freda Tepper. I live in Erie. First, I want to remind people that Friday, the 19th, is the deadline to sign up for health insurance under the Affordable Care Act. So, in Pennsylvania, you just go to the Penny website and you sign up. If you were previously on Medicaid and you're no longer income-eligible, that's where you need to go to get health insurance. And there should be some good options for people there. So, first, I live in the Baldwin Park neighborhood. I live north of West 26th Street, just a block and a half from Green Garden. Green Garden there is pretty narrow. The homes have very short driveways, and they're really close together. Nobody, oddly enough, that I know of on that segment of Green Garden has said anything about the bikeway. We also have, we have a traffic light at 26th Street, and there's a four-way stop at 21st. Other than that, people are kinda on their own to get across Green Garden. So, a couple of things about the bike lane. I think that there needs to be an accessible pedestrian signal at West 38th Street. Somehow, PennDOT missed the boat and didn't put one in. And if you're going to be doing stuff, you should make sure there's an accessible pedestrian signal there at West 38th Street. I do not understand why you are stopping this project at the Bayfront Connector when it should just go one more block and get to West 8th Street, and then you could put in a three-way stop there, and the bicycles would get to Frontier Park. And the people, pedestrians and vehicles need a three-way stop there. But what the heck are you supposed to do with a bicycle at Green Garden and the Bayfront Connector? Where do you go? Why isn't it going that one more block? I watched a webinar today from San Francisco called Getting Across, Getting to the Sidewalk. And it's all about how people with disabilities can coexist with bike paths. So, I, and I sent the information to the planning people and the engineering people. And I hope that how this bikeway is going to be constructed is actually gonna be utilizing best practices because there can be considerable issues for people with disabilities with separated bike lanes if they're not done properly. There's a tactile surface indicator, which is a good way to let people know that there is a bike path at a crossing. As to the restroom, and I know that if she could be, Kathy would be here today. It's really, I don't know why the city didn't set aside money for restrooms in the ARP process. I mean, that's what a lot of cities use their ARP money for. We need restrooms. I often, I used to use the one at City Hall when I was downtown. But because of the whole security thing to get in, it's really not a viable option for me anymore. And on weekends, there's hardly anywhere to go. And that's for just anybody, not just homeless people. A civilized community has public restrooms. And you pay people to maintain them. It's not like rocket science. You pay people to maintain them, and then they'll be clean. In the past, the Perry Square Alliance has been an obstacle to having a restroom downtown. And I don't think they should have much influence in this if they're gonna be an obstacle. I just wanna mention, imagine all the people who don't have a place to sleep in Erie. People who don't have decent sanitation, who don't have enough to eat. That's what's going on right now in Gaza. And we need for our congressmen and senators to tell the government that we're not gonna send unconditional support to Israel until we have a ceasefire, until there's decent humanitarian aid for the people in Gaza. Thank you.
Good evening. Adam Trot, Erie. I have a handout for council members. Do I come up and give them? I brought seven. A couple are missing. See, take one if you want. First, a quick thank you. Sister Mary Miller Way. Wonderful idea. Thank you. She was a great servant to the community. I wanted to say a few things about the, on the agenda, the Green Garden Bikeway. A lot of us grew up in the '60s and '70s when there weren't as many cars, and they weren't going as quickly, and the roads weren't as fast as they are. That's different today, and it's made worse by texting and other distractions. Sorry. So, the idea about bike lanes is to try and restore some of the independence that younger folks and people who can't afford a car can get access to places. So, the Green Garden piece of the loop is the city piece. And that's important to get done. Freda's right. When you get north of 26th Street, it gets a lot more complicated. But 38th to 26th, that's 100-foot right-of-way. About the biggest you get in the city. There's no excuse not to have the bike lanes there. 38th Street, West 38th is 80-foot right-of-way. East 38th is 90-foot right-of-way. We should be getting bike lanes there, but that's a PennDOT issue. Freda's right about connecting to Frontier Park. That's to link the Erie Loop to the Bayfront Parkway, going along the edge of Frontier Park and then connecting in with the Parkway. So, you know, I know it's gonna be more money because it's windy and narrower from the connector to A Street. So, if we don't do it now, I'd like the idea to be that we constantly look at completing the loop. So, if we can keep that in mind. Branding the loop. We need signage that says, "This is the Erie Bike Loop." So, that, I don't know if there's any signage in the current package, but we need to consider that for future work on this bikeway. And with that, I'd like to just say thank you for putting it on the agenda. We've been trying to get this for quite a long time. I think Bike Erie's been advocating for this since like 2015. So, we'd like to see it move forward, and we'd like to get more of these bike lanes going. I know some are on the table. And thank you for the Erie Active Transportation Plan.
Good evening. My name is Bill Heath. I'm from Erie. Congratulations to the New Look City Council. Thank you to the mayor for prompt action for tie-breaking vote. And the council now has a great balance of, mix of people and experience and youth and vigor and egos and all kinds of things that any group and team will encounter. So, I think the city of Erie is very deserving to have all of you here. And that's a, that's a really, a really good thing. I think it was brought up last, last meeting about the respect for other people and respect for older people. So, I think number one, we need to make sure that we respect each other, not just the city council, but the public to the city council and the city council back to the city and the members of the community. No man is an island. We need one another. And congratulations to a great icon. Thank you very much.
Laura Eaton. And I'm the owner of the Floral Gallery at 815 State Street. I also have a handout for the... Let's get one of each. I'm here to talk about the parking in downtown Erie. We have a serious situation going on, and I'm not sure if the council knows about it, but somebody's losing money. On your handout, it shows they took the parking meters out on State Street. I am all for parking meters or some sort of way to control the parking in downtown Erie because that's how you get people to come down. They need a place to park. They do their business, and then they leave. Well, right now, since they tore up State Street, and we've been suffering through it, but we are. We're very glad of what the mayor and everybody is doing. In fact, you have a, Todd Bruno has been excellent in answering our questions and helping us downtown. But this, if you look at the first picture here, yes, of the, of the way to pay to park. If you're coming downtown for the first time or in a long time, even if you're not a senior citizen, if you look at this, you have no idea what to do. You have to have a cell phone. You have to have a bank account. You have to have this, this, and this, and you have to know how to do it. I don't know how to do it. I'm there every day, and people come in and say, "How do you do this?" There was never any instructions given by the Parking Authority of what they were to do. I've talked to a Parking Authority member. I called into the office. We should have some instructions. They should come to the people who have businesses down here so we can help. If you're a senior citizen, you're not gonna do this. You're not gonna figure it out. And in my block alone, there's a sign at the corner by Like My Tie. And then you go 48 feet, and then there's another little sign there. And then you go 150 feet from that one sign all the way to the other side of the Warner, and there are no signs. And then another 48 feet, and there's a sign. If you're driving down State Street and there's traffic behind you, you pull in, and you didn't see the sign, you don't know what you're supposed to do. We just had a convention here. The Warner had a big, big showing. And those people were all from out of town, and they got tickets all day long. In our block, we had parking that day because these people were from out of town. Now, if you go up and down State Street, there's nobody parking out there. My block, there's never a car out front. Across the street, at Dollar General, and he was gonna try to be here tonight, but he didn't know if he can make it. His business is way down because they don't know how to park. Nobody knows what to do. And you need to tell people how to take care of the situation. The Parking Authority said to me, "Well, they're losing revenue because there was no parking during construction." Well, now, they're losing more revenue because no one's paying to park. And is it not true that the city gets part of some of the parking tickets? Is that not true, Mayor? I'm not sure. Yeah, you're not getting parking tickets because there's nobody parking there. So, we need to fix this, or businesses like mine are gonna have to go out. And we're gonna have a lot of people close their businesses, which is gonna be a loss of revenue for the city, that we need help. And we need help right away. All the little businesses that are there, the Plymouth. You go by the Plymouth, and there's nobody parked there because they can't figure it out. People do not know what to do. And this system that they put in, I was told by the Parking Authority person, one of the members of the board, that it's experimental, and they didn't know how it was, if it was gonna work or not. Well, they need to quit experimenting and figure something out. Give us back the parking meters. We don't care. Give us, and I believe in parking. Now, if you go to the block on 9th, on State Street, between 9th and 10th, on the east side, they have none of these little signs. And people park there all day long for free. Why doesn't that block have signs? Why are those people parking there? And that's what happens if you don't have parking meters. People sit there that work downtown, sit there all day for free. And that's not good for the businesses either. We need to have some sort of parking that will benefit the city, benefit the Parking Authority, and benefit the merchants. Please, help us. We really need some help, Mayor. And that Todd Bruno is an excellent person. Thank you.
How you doing? Roosevelt Benjamin. I live in here. I reside in Erie, PA. I just wanna touch on a couple of things that we talked about last, our last meeting, about the youth and being too old to be on the city council. And I had to go back, and I talked to a couple of my old coaches in college and professional ranks. And I talked to them about, when they talked to me when I was younger, about what did we need, or what did he mean by veteran leadership in the locker room? You hear a lot of the great coaches, Bill Parcells, just some of the great coaches. And they always talked about in organizations, about having veteran leadership. And what he explained to me was, having veteran leadership in the locker room or anywhere in the workplace or whatever, it means you have a person who's been through a little but can teach you a lot. It's not always good to have a young locker room or a young workplace. And he also was telling me in that, those people of the veteran leadership in those experienced positions, these people teach the younger group where to go when they move into that town as an athlete. Where to go, where to eat, what to do, who to talk to, who not to talk to, and what neighborhoods not to cross into. Those are what veteran leaders bring to us. The Erie didn't hit their head and bump their heads six or seven times for the young folks don't have to do it. So, when we, when we talk about this as a city council, and we, you wanna move to a younger crowd or a younger group, let's put some veterans in there so they can teach us. We should be hugging and putting our arms around Mel Witherspoon because he's the veteran of this bunch. He's did it. He's done it. He's been successful. He's been on your board or your council for 20-plus years. There's a reason why he wasn't fixing the votes is because he was doing something right in the community. So, you, you think about it. You have two more years with the icon, one of the icons. He's not here for Erie. But who's more popular and who's more positive than this guy? Think about it. For those next two years that he's serving, we should be honored. The young people should take, take this, walk up to him, "Mr. Mel, how did you do it? Please show me the people that you had to do when the Bloods and Crips was fighting, when, when the east side couldn't cross State Street, and the west side couldn't cross State Street. Mel, who did you talk to to slow this down? I know a lot of y'all looking at the air like y'all don't care because y'all probably haven't been in these communities and don't have to deal with it. I understand that. But understand what we have to go through every single day. I know it's a lot of attitude up there, but I'm all right with it. But like I said, that's the leadership that he brings. Figure out who he had to go talk to. Figure out his connections in other communities where they can go talk and come and be a part of it. And like I said before, y'all try to make it down And like I said before, y'all try to make it down to something that was going on for twenty years, Mel Witherspoon's Summer League. Y'all, y'all come down, y'all wanna be a part of the community, come down there and shake those kids' hands. Be a part of that. Figure out that the school district belongs to City Council as well. Ninety-plus percent of those kids belong to the Erie School District. They're your responsibility as well. Not just sitting up here on Wednesdays. Get out in the community. Figure out who he talks to. Figure out how he gets it done, and how he has been getting it done for twenty-plus years. You've got two great people sitting on the wings. Use them. Instead of running off at the mouth figuring out what we wanna do as this young vibrant bunch. A coach told me, "You got two ears, one mouth." Listen up to these older gentlemen that's here, just give us these last couple of years that they have. He don't need the money. That's not what he's here for. He's here to make a city that he came to after graduating from Gannon University and never went back home, make it a better place for us and you as well. That's what y'all need to take advantage of. And that's what we need to look at. If I was anybody, if I was to run for City Council, the first person I'm gonna come to is these two. What I need to do? What do I need to do? Lead me in the direction. Show me the people that you talked to. Show me the people that you didn't talk to. Show me what I need to do, instead of going in here as this young vibrant group and just start making the mistakes that's been made years and years and years and years and years ago, because you got veteran leadership who's been here forever. All I'm saying is use it, use it to y'all advantage. Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Presonia. I live at twenty-seven zero three Green Garden, and I'm here representing the Green Garden Boulevard Association. I guess I'm here to talk about the bike path. I just wanna let you know that the Green Garden Boulevard Association is for the bike path. We just have an issue with the parking. We thought it was all resolved last year. We've sort of taken our signs down and thought everything was good to go, and we found out that, I guess, things are back to what, where they were last summer again. We did get a letter this afternoon explaining some of the points that we brought up, and we appreciate the letter. And, but there are still some further issues, and we were just wondering, before the vote is taken on changing the parking regulations, if we could have a, a public meeting or a meeting with the members of the Green Garden Association that are the ones who's gonna be affected by this parking regulation. So, that's all I really have to say. And I do have to agree with a couple of the other comments here. If this bike path does go in, we really need to have it connected from the Bayfront to Frontier Park. That seems to have an orphan bike path that goes from Thirty-Eighth Street to Twelfth Street, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Going up and down that path wouldn't be a whole lot of fun for anybody. But if you could connect to the bike path on Frontier Park, go to the Peninsula, go out to Barron, that would make it a lot better pa, bike path. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may.
Go for it.
Uh, the Mayor and Ms. Lewis have agreed that we will have a meeting with the Green Garden folks well before the February seventh meeting. Things we vote on today are gonna take two votes. So, we wanna make sure that it's, it's enough confusion to cause confusion.
Yeah, a lot of emails went through between three and five o'clock today, so I was the one available tonight to come down and talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Michael Keyes, City of Erie. Couple of things I did wanna touch on, you know, having formally sat on Council, you know, it comes down to money allocation, resources, and no matter what community you're in, and whether you're up there or whether you're down there, it still comes to that money allocation of resources and where those resources go. If you think the city's in a better position now than it was fifteen years ago, then Wall Street twenty-four-seven would disagree with you, especially for a certain section of us. But, why I'm here primarily is that, uh, the Miller Brothers Building, that the city has signaled that they're looking to put in a RAC P grant for the Miller Brothers property, which a RAC P grant, um, has to have a fifty percent match, which means the city itself would be on the hook in some way or fashion for another twelve million of these dollars in order to do this project. So, what I'm asking is that the, the Mayor and his staff, and I, that they put in a RAC P grant for the Roger Young Park. We already have the match, the match is in the bank. If you put in for a RAC P grant right now, when we got the money to upgrade the park, if you like to enhance the design or redo the design, there is already a foundational plan that you can build off, that you can submit, and that you can get those funds. And when you get the funds, we have the matching funds, so we don't have to raid any other investments or whatever that we might have to go to get the money in order to do that. And so, I think that that's the low bar, to put in a RAC P also for the Roger Young Park, because we already have the match. It won't cost the citizens any additional money. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes?
If I may.
Go for it.
One of the things I plan to do is continue what former Councilman Keyes has started on Roger Young Park. It's gonna be one of my major programs that I'm gonna push for. It's needed. He started it, and we're gonna see it through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Cole Schenley. I live in the City of Erie. And first, I wanted to congratulate President Flores. I think it's awesome that you're up there. And I know you've been a little disrespected tonight by some of the people in the audience, so I wanted to give you, give you your props. There's a lot of talk about civility in this room, young versus old, all these kinds of things. And I think it's great to have those conversations. I think we should have those conversations, but I would hope that some of the people in this room would, when they talk about civility, they would show that civility. A couple of my friends, they, people tried to call their jobs and get them fired after the last meeting because of the way they spoke out. And I don't think that that's very nice. I think that that's kind of cruel. And then there's a lot of talk about young versus old. And it's an interesting conversation, because I actually think it's a silly conversation. Anybody can be up there that's good, young, young, old, whatever, we, we need all kinds of voices. But it's about intelligence. It's about who's going to lead the city into the future. And there's a lot of older voices that never really get their props. I know that people talk about mentors and things like that. Freda is one of the people that mentors me. I know, I talk to Art Leopold a lot. He mentors me. Talked to Cindy Purvis a lot. She mentors me. There's a lot of older people in this city that don't have the same views as the people on the wings up there. And they have a lot of intelligence too, so I don't think it's about who's been around the longest and all this kind of stuff. I think it's about who's best going to lead the city into the future. And I know that I wanna be a part of that. I look up here, and there's seven seats, and some of my friends have those seats. And I'm not a, I'm not a perfect person. I have sin in my heart. I have lust in my heart. I see seven seats, and I want seven seats. I want all seven seats. I want my friends to have all seven seats, because we're better, and we know better. I'm not going to stop until I have all seven seats. I'm going to take them, and then I'm gonna run this city, and my friends are gonna run this city, some of them are up there, and none of you are gonna do anything about it except sit and wonder where your life went. Thanks.
Good evening. Susanna Faulkner, City of Erie. I think the one word I would like to stress tonight for all of us in the audience and on the desk is integrity. As we move forward into this year, we must, as a community, move forward with high integrity. If you haven't checked, Erie County is one of seven counties across the entire United States that NBC has declared will be followed at an extra level of media attention for the election. We are a bellwether county. What happens in Erie is what happens in the state, is what happens in the nation. So, we are one of seven of thousands of counties that are gonna have an extra eyes on us. I have people reaching out to me from other states saying, "Hey, I was watching national NBC News, and Erie was on it." So, as we make decisions, as corruption comes to light, no, it will not just be local media, it will be national media. And so, as we think about integrity, I want to share a quote that I have had up on my bulletin board since I was in college. It's very fitting, given that this, just this Monday, we marched to honor Dr. Reverend, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. So, here is a direct quote from him. "May I stress the need for courageous, intelligent, and dedicated leadership. Leaders of sound integrity. Leaders not in love with publicity, but in love with justice. Leaders not in love with money, but in love with humanity. Leaders who can subject their particular egos to the greatness of the cause. God gives us leaders. A time like this demands great souls with pure hearts and ready hands. Leaders whom the lust of office does not kill. Leaders whom the spoils of life cannot buy. Leaders who possess opinions and a will. Leaders who will not lie. Leaders who can stand before the demagogue and damn his treacherous flatteries without winking. Tall leaders, sun-crowned, who live above the fog in public duty and in private thinking. This is one of the great needs of the hour. But as we move on all over this nation, we will need dedicated, courageous, and intelligent leaders." Thank you.
Good evening, guys. Anthony McGowan, City of Erie. I'm here tonight, along with many others, in support of Mr. Melvin Wood, Witherspoon. And, um, man, it's kinda hard to follow up, laugh, comment, I like it through his laugh. But, um, man, so he want all seven seats, and want all his friends on his seven seats. Well, we're here in support of Mr. Melvin Witherspoon, and we oppose anybody that's against him, against him. My name is Anthony McGowan. Google me. I'm gonna make it my personal mission to make sure anyone that's opposing Mr. Melvin Wood, Melvin Witherspoon will not see another term. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Ewing. I live at two zero two four Fairmont Parkway, Erie, PA one six five one zero. Today, I wanna come first and foremost and congratulate my friend Jasmine Flores on being the first Latina that, to serve as City Council President in the City of Erie's history. I think that's a very historic thing coming two days after Martin Luther King Day. Today, the reason I came down, I wasn't gonna speak out on this at all. I stayed away from this issue because all the, all of the parties involved in, in, in the strife that took place here, I love and respect each and every member of City Council. I consider each and every member of City Council a friend. And so, I wasn't gonna speak out on this. However, I did wanna come and to talk with you a little bit about what took place. Under the rules and order of this chamber, this august body, when a deadlock vote happens, that vote resorts to the executive branch to make the tie-breaking decision. That's just the rules under which you guys operate. At the point at which that Mr. Witherspoon was his name, it was clear that he was going to get that appointment. The Mayor had spoke on that. He didn't even wanna make the tie-breaking vote. What should've happened when that vote deadlocked was it should've went back to the floor again, and there should've been a unanimous vote for Mr. Witherspoon. That's what should've happened. You see, all around our community, people like me that are super voters, who vote in every election, we pay very close attention to these issues. We love everybody involved. We care about everybody involved. But when you lose at the ballot box, you have to give up the go. You know, when I was a kid, we used to play a game where we would count how much money we had in our pockets. And we would compare who had more money, so you could challenge your friend. And in situations like this, it is very similar to that game. Sometimes, big bank takes little bank. I understand the need for people, some people, to have their AJO moment, but I think as a council and as a city, we need to determine what hills we're gonna, we're willing to die on, and what fights are worth having. The opportunity to have an elder statesman like Mr. Witherspoon serve in the capacity he's serving in is a gift to our community. Because on the day I was born, May fifth, nineteen eighty-four, Mel Witherspoon was doing the exact same thing he's doing today. This is not, it's not complicated. He has ties in the community. Ties that not everybody who runs for this office, or has ideals of doing a good job on this office, or has notions of what they wanna see in government, has. There is value in our elders. There is value in Mr. Brzezinski. That's why Mr. Brzezinski put Mel Witherspoon's name forward. They have that connection, right? They have a lot of history there. And, and Mr. Witherspoon, you have a lot of history in our community, in our hearts, in our lives, from the time we were born. And that's why I'm here, okay? Because I feel like two days after Martin Luther King Day, it's a shame that so many people have to come here and to check city government on the fact that that should have been a unanimous consent vote. That should've been unanimous. When it became clear that that was deadlocked, and he was going to be appointed to that seat, that should've went back to a vote, and it should've been six-zero. Choose which battles you're willing to fight, because like I said, big bank takes little bank. I appreciate you, Mr. Witherspoon. I appreciate each and every person on City Council. I really, really do. But again, folks are watching at home. With inflation, our, our community, we've got kids killing kids in our community, and we're arguing over whether or not we're gonna put one of the most talented and experienced legislators into a seat on City Council? Like, really? And then, in addition to that, I'm gonna leave you on this note. The forces in our community which will yell Black Lives Matter the loudest are the same forces that stood up against Mr. Witherspoon being appointed here today. I just wanna say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dave Thomas, Erie, Pennsylvania, Erie, I guess that's where we at, right? Anyway, I'm speaking on the behalf of Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Brzezinski used to be my tenth grade teacher at Erie, uh, East High School. All right? But, um, the thing I'm hea, the thing I'm hearing is, I've been watching the news, I'm not a political person, but I've been watching the news, I've been watching TV, and I'm saying how they keep talking about the old, the new. It's okay for change. We need new. We, you know what I mean? We should have set, we should have set new. But you need the older to guide the new into the future. You see what I'm saying? Like, it's okay to always wanna bring up something new all the time. This man, like you said, I'm piggybacking off of what these guys said. He's an icon in this city. Do you know how many lives he has saved because he has a basketball league? You know how many lives he have saved? I grew up on the east side. I live on the west side now. But the thing he has done, he has brought communities together with kids who would be fighting and, and shooting each other, he brought them together on a basketball court. They can actually go on the basketball court and stick together and say, "That's my friend right now." We not beefing because this man has brought us together, and there's no violence to be seen today. You know, um, I'm not one for the talk a lot. Mr. Brzezinski knows I was always the quiet one in the back of the class. But, um, I'm not one to talk a lot, and I really don't come out to these type of things because I sit back and let other people speak for me. I sit there and I watch, I let people talk, and they talk, and they talk. And a lot of things they're saying, it's not the right things that should be heard. We need the stability of him. Mr. Brzezinski, the Mayor, I voted for you. Need the guys like him in office, these guys in office, to make us realize what is really going on in the city. Like, we all, like, I know Mr. True. You know, I'm a little bit older than him, but we all grew up together. I don't know you, I don't know you, but I've seen you on TV consistently. You guys always talking about what's going on in our city. But, not trying to be funny, I've never seen either one of y'all at an event that has really actually sponsored black communities. Not neither one of y'all. Only reason I'm saying that, because every year, not trying to bolster that, I give out free book bags to kids in the community who can't afford them. And I've never seen one newscast, nobody to come up there, support something that I'm doing. I don't ask for it, I don't look for it, I don't want it. But these guys here should have everybody's support. No matter what's going on in the world today, these guys should have everybody's support in this community because they're great, great, great men. Thank you.
Good evening, members of Council. Carl Anderson, thirty-eight thirty Parade Boulevard, lifelong resident of the City of Erie. You know, there's never been a time when it's been more important that we, as a community, work together with unity and cooperation. Now is the time. I have mentioned this several times at the County Council meetings, while on Council, and since I've left Council. The City of Erie is under assault by the county executive, by people outside of this community that would attempt to undermine us and wanna see us fail. We ourselves hold our own destiny in our hands. We need to work together in unity, cooperation, to ensure that we control our own destiny. And yet, as I've observed some of the meetings here at City Council, I see divisiveness and underminingness of the people that would say that they're here to promote the city that they say they love. Meetings where extremism is undermining our progress. We need to focus on community service, not self-service. Yet, a group of self-serving opportunas that have twisted and spun propaganda for their own agendas, not community progress, have made inflammatory- than that that's the way community service is conducted. They've been entrusted with, uh, community work, and yet, uh, because somehow they're not appointed there after being, sitting on that seat, perhaps that's why they were unsuccessful when they faced the voters in the primary? Perhaps that's why they were unsuccessful while working with other members of council who are sitting up there tonight, uh, in trying to run a write-in campaign? Perhaps that's why they couldn't get the support of their colleagues in trying to seek out the seat? Because being appointed to the seat is not about self-service and launching anybody's political career. It's about community service and serving out the term that you're being appointed to, not attempting to launch a political career, but serving for the people and bringing your experience and your knowledge to this community to keep the agenda and the progress of this community moving forward. They have used putting forward the names of 12 people committed to this community, uh, and yet, by them, their, their own admission, have only promoted themselves when they come up here and speak at the dais for their own personal gain. Not once have I heard them talk about, uh, the other 12 people, uh, that, that were discussed in, in, uh, putting their applications forward. Taking credit for legislation such as a sanctuary city which already exists in the legislation of the HRC, and at the same time, there was a dismantling of a tent city that occurred right along Mill Creek, people in this community don't even know about, and not a word was said about it. The rental legislation that was put forward already exists under state law, not one, not one thing different was put in place. Yet, all this was done, and it was said right on the dais that they were then going to get national headlines and exposure for doing it. It's curious to me, as if those people are here claiming to be working towards equity and fairness, why would they be pushing their own agenda in using sexism, racism, and especially ageism to push that agenda? How much more disingenuous and lacking of transparency can one be? Yet, what's even more concerning to me is the way in which the self-promoting, uh, has affected projects that are moving forward in this community, which could become, uh, certainly illegal and questionable in ethical behavior when brought forward, uh, in discussing last week where certain members of council live.
Carl, that's the end of your time.
Uh, it certainly is concerning that, uh, when audits are done in this community, uh, that those fundings may be lost, and it should be checked into.
Carl, it's the end of your time. The next person you must come forward, please.
Those residents may be living. Thank you.
Marty Waschuku, Erie, Pennsylvania, community organizer for Erie County United. I thought about being softer, given the turnout for support for corruption, but I'm gonna still read what I wrote. I vow to tell the tale of how despicable, greedy, and egomaniacal the mayor and his council thugs are until the end of their days. Their continual open and flagrant corruption has made my capacity for storytelling about their dirty deeds much easier. I'm not up here to address you, council, but rather my Erie neighbors and my neighbors across the state and country. You, you lack the range and capacity for global and statewide and national critical thinking, and you expect the public to share in your own limitations. We do not. The mayor's moved to reappoint the termed-out 20-year experience, and since I can't name names, melanated geriatric up there has shown everyone that your collective management of the city is illegitimate. Mayor Schenber and his wannabe goodfellas have robbed Erie of a fair public process to fill a council vacancy seat. It humors me that the last time I spoke to council, I called your actions fascist, and then again, you acted like a fascist. Neighbors, they have sealed the deal on the advent of gentrification and corporate and private equity land grab in Erie, Pennsylvania. One will, that, that will increase our homelessness, increase our rent prices, and make life more challenging for working-class people in Erie. People who are struggling to survive, but your elected representatives are working to make it hard and worse. They have sacrificed the future of Erie to the god of money. The taxes you pay them for your hard work and labor is mismanaged and a plaything for them, the rich, and the Erie Police Department. Local oligarchs and family ties run Erie, and they're selling off our city to the highest bidders. Their gleeful support of corporate land theft and carceral violence will doom us all. This is not hyperbole. Your government managers, from city council to county to national government, are incompetent and greedy, traits that have never led to good things. I've done my due diligence over the years and now to warn my neighbors of council's greed and vanity. I implore you, my neighbors, to think of your, think for yourself and speak up against the corruption. Trust your neighbors' experiences and not the nonsense that falls from their propagandized lips of government and business managers. I dare not call them leaders, lest they curse the word. Neighbor, your life here and the people's lives around the world depend on you speaking up and coming to community. When council makes votes that enrich themselves, their corporate sponsors and sponsors, the sponsors use that money to save dollars, pay for political campaigns for our useless politicians, fund the war machine that funds genocides around the world, and the police departments that harass, maim, and kill black citizens, all while you, the taxpayer, get nothing. Every dollar we give to them that they've mismanaged is a dollar given to elite interests in the suffering of our poor. Also, they're racist, like hella racist, in a particular way that is northern, that's not explicit, but black people can tell. Please spare us from ever again hearing about one of your stories about talking to one black person at one time. No one's worried about racist bones in your body when your spirit is racist. Anyway, anyone who tells you that black, Latina, Asian, and Mena people don't suffer in Erie is either a proud racist, a white liberal who has a lot more learning to do, or, uh, what we in the black community have an unkind name for. Counsel, stop complaining about the rudeness of youth when they come to speak. You don't have the range to understand them when they speak kindly to you, so in frustration, they speak nasty. All you can comment on is their tone, not the content of their speech. Your defensiveness betrays you. You project, and we see it. Your cognitive dissonance tells you that respect is the problem, but you know that is you who is the problem. Neighbors, let 2024 be the year that you set your eyes upon the corruption of Erie government and business. They're fool enough to not hide it anymore. Be bold enough to call it out. Thank you.
Do we have any more citizens who would like to be heard? Do we have any more citizens who would like to be heard? Do we have any more citizens who would like to be heard?
All right, we'll move on.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16413, official ordinance 22024, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for use by the Bureau of Police, Fire, and Streets. Sponsored by council member Brzezinski, seconded by council member Trup. The council file bill number 16413, and now known as the official file ordinance 22024, be finally passed by city council. Council members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Trup, Wetherspoon, Flores. City council pass official file ordinance 22024 by ye seven na zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16414, appropriating the sum of $500 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from donations made by Edwin and Patty Curtsie Fire Department. Sponsored by council member Wetherspoon, seconded by council member Brzezinski. The council file ordinance number 16414 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Trup, Wetherspoon, and Flores. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16414 by ye seven na zero on first Council file number 16415 of the city council, the city of Erie, the city determining to incur lease rental debt, debt, evidence by the guaranteed revenue bond and the maximum principal amount of $20 million to be authorized and issued by Erie City Water Authority in connection with the construction alteration and improvements to the public water distribution facilities in and about this city, including but not limited to the Asbury Tank Pump Station and Pro Phi Improvement Projects, and paying related costs, fees, and expenses specifying the realistic useful life of the project. Authorizing and directing appropriate officers of the city to take certain actions and to execute certain documents, including a guarantee agreement between the city as a guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, approving the form maximum guaranteed amounts and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations, and appointing a sinking fund depository, and providing for the repeal of all inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances. Sponsored by council member Trup, seconded by council member Nelson. The council file ordinance number 16415 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Trup, Wetherspoon, Flores. City council read and adopt council file number 16416 of the city council, the city of Erie, determining to incur lease rental debt, evidence by the guaranteed revenue bond and the maximum principal amount of $3,908,584, to be authorized and issued by the Erie City Water Authority in connection with the construction alteration and improvements to the public water distribution facilities in and about the city, including but not limited to the lead service line replacement project, phase four, and paying related costs, fees, and expenses specifying the realistic useful life of the project. Authorizing and directing appropriate officers of the city to take certain actions and to execute certain documents, including a guarantee agreement between the city as guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, approving the form maximum guaranteed amounts and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations, and appointing a sinking fund depository, and providing for the repeal of all inconsistent ordinances or parts of Sponsored by council member Trup, seconded by council member Nelson. The council file ordinance number 16416 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Trup, Wetherspoon, Flores. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16416 by ye seven na zero on first reading. Council file number 16418, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $351,650 and 39 cents from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, from the sewer fund balance, and will be used to purchase a truck-mounted combination sewer cleaner at the wastewater treatment plant.
Did we ever get the rest of the story on that? The gentleman that spoke, that citizens be heard?
I don't think we got any background details or context.
$120,000 difference, I'd like to kinda know what that's all about.
This, uh, this being a first reading, I, I'd hope to get it. Everyone that he cited having spoken to has been replaced in the last, yesterday, both of them were.
Has the reading provided?
So, I, um, I, I would like answers on that before we get to the second reading. I'll vote in favor on the first reading, 'cause I, as this stands, I don't, um, I mean, if we, if we alloc, if we allocate this money, and it turns out there's less money than that to spend somewhere else, then, uh, then we can still allocate it and just spend less somewhere else. Um, but I, I would like some answers on that, uh, in short order.
I agree.
Madam President, I think we, uh, agree with Councilman Nelson. Some way, we need to, uh, pass this, but ask administration to put a total hold on that dollar amount, and don't put it in another bucket. Let it sit there until we, uh, deal with it in the next meeting.
All right. I can support that. I agree. We need to find out what's going on. If there's, uh, a cost saving somewhere in there, then we need to find out all the details.
Any other discussion? Council file ordinance number 16418 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Trup, Wetherspoon, Flores. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16418 by ye seven na zero on first reading. 令数, file number 16416 of the city council, the city of Erie, determining to incur lease rental, rental debt, evidenced by the guaranteed revenue bond and the maximum principal amount of $3,908,584, to be authorized and issued by the Erie City Water Authority in connection with the construction alteration and improvements to the public water distribution facilities in and about the city, including but not limited to the lead service line replacement project, phase four, and paying related costs, fees, and expenses specifying the realistic useful life of the project. Authorizing and directing appropriate officers of the city to take certain actions and to execute certain documents, including a guarantee agreement between the city as guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, approving the form maximum guaranteed amounts and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations, and appointing a sinking fund depository, and providing for the repeal of all inconsistent ordinances or parts of Sponsored by council member Trup, seconded by council member Nelson. The council file ordinance number 16416 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Trup, Wetherspoon, Flores. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16416 by ye seven na zero on first reading. Council file number 16418, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $351,650 and 39 cents from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, from the sewer fund balance, and will be used to purchase a truck-mounted combination sewer cleaner at the wastewater treatment plant.
Did we ever get the rest of the story on that? The gentleman that spoke, that citizens be heard?
I don't think we got any background details or context.
$120,000 difference, I'd like to kinda know what that's all about.
This, uh, this being a first reading, I, I'd hope to get it. Everyone that he cited having spoken to has been replaced in the last, yesterday, both of them were.
Has the reading provided?
So, I, um, I, I would like answers on that before we get to the second reading. I'll vote in favor on the first reading, 'cause I, as this stands, I don't, um, I mean, if we, if we alloc, if we allocate this money, and it turns out there's less money than that to spend somewhere else, then, uh, then we can still allocate it and just spend less somewhere else. Um, but I, I would like some answers on that, uh, in short order.
I agree.
Madam President, I think we, uh, agree with Councilman Nelson. Some way, we need to, uh, pass this, but ask administration to put a total hold on that dollar amount, and don't put it in another bucket. Let it sit there until we, uh, deal with it in the next meeting.
All right. I can support that. I agree. We need to find out what's going on. If there's, uh, a cost saving somewhere in there, then we need to find out all the details.
Any other discussion? Council file ordinance number 16418 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Trup, Wetherspoon, Flores. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16418 by ye seven na zero on first reading. Madam President, this takes us to new business.
Madam President, I move the balance.
Second.
Thank you. Any separations, members of council?
Definitely number two.
Number four.
Any other separation?
I think they're still going through the list.
I'll take number six, please.
And order. Any other separation?
I'm good. Anyone else? Good?
Moving the balance of the agenda, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Trup,
I'm good. Anyone else? Good.
Moving the balance of the agenda, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Shaw and Flores. Number two in new business. Sponsored by council member Brzezinski, seconded by council member Flores, that Erie City Council designates a portion of East Eleventh Street, Erie, PA, Sister Mary Miller Way after her passing in recognition for her years as director of the Amaya Soup Kitchen and her service and contributions to the Erie community. Discussion?
Doesn't take a whole lot of discussion, all you have to do is mention her name and most people knew exactly the things that she did. We thank Ed Kissel, I don't know if Ed's still here or not, uh, he brought it to our attention and, uh, Colosseum Shoffler, we should have probably done this just before Christmas, but, uh, we got it done now.
Yes. Yeah, that was my heartfelt sentiment that we wanted to get it done because it should have been done before the end of the year and there's a new process coming forward and we wanted to make sure that it was all taken care of because she was a great woman and she did a lot of service to our community.
And with them taking that credit, I guess it's my fault that it didn't get put on last year. Sorry, with us setting up that process, I, I thought that the timing was, so I'm happy to see it happen today.
I hate to stick off for you, but you, you run the right hearing too. It was a pending ordinance.
Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Go ahead Kathy.
Madam President.
Go ahead Kathy.
The Amaya Soup Kitchen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Um, the Amaya Soup Kitchen celebrated fifty years, uh, last week and Sister Mary Miller was a long time person who ran it so beautifully, so thank you.
Thank you.
He was forty-two years. Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon and Resolution number four, resolved by the city council of the city of Erie that to bring on a collaborative group of interested parties to discuss whereas the city has no twenty-four seven public restroom facilities at this time, whereas the health and sanitation needs of all people need to be met to prevent communicable diseases to people and animals, whereas a business post, businesses post no restroom facility if a person is not paying a customer, whereas this city council body will have study sessions and look into the cost of supporting this public health crisis with other city government officials, profit and nonprofit entities in a collaborative effort, whereas this city council body realizes the urgent need of this matter for all those people who live, work and play and look for restroom needs to be met in our city. Discussion?
Um, Madam President.
Yes.
I think they're going to have to turn down the volume a little bit. So, um.
Sing something, it's my turn.
I can't sing. Um, I know that, uh, Councilwoman Shaw put this on the agenda and I know that, um, just knowing her, what type of person she is, she has a heart for people and I know that. I know she really cares about people. Uh, when she was on, wasn't even on council for the last four years, she served all over the city. I mean, like homeless people, um, doing all this, all, she came to every city council meeting, she went to all the authority meetings. She didn't ask for any limelight. Nobody knows all the stuff that she does, like behind closed doors. Um, but I looked this up just to see how other cities are handling this issue of public restrooms and I see that, I saw that it was a, um, top, big topic everywhere right now. And, um, it says a lot of cities are declining to do it because it brings a lot of issues too. Um, you know, as far as if you have a, build a restroom in Perry Square, you know, and let's say it's, ten people can go in there at a time. Now you need security, um, if somebody says I'm going in and I'm not coming out, how you going to get them out? Sanitation, got to pay somebody to clean it, we got to, you know, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but we need to make sure we really, um, do our research and not just think with our heart and put our head into it too, so that, uh, we are service, you know, helping our homeless population and, and other people who just go downtown, but we also have to think about the other risk factors that are involved with this, so I'm glad to see that we're, you know, going to participate in study sessions and things like that and not just make a, a hard decision and use our head at the same time, so, that's it. Thank you.
Any other council members want to have discussion?
I think it's a great idea that it's going to be collaborative type of situation. I think all venues should be involved in it. Uh, but we have to be careful because, uh, as Mr. Troop had said, other cities have closed theirs down. Detroit for one, a block away from Tiger Stadium and, oh, Comerica I guess they call it now, I'm aging myself, and Ford Field, uh, there's an underground parking lot there and there used to be restrooms and facilities. They closed it down because it was almost impossible to keep track of, to clean and to secure as far as who's in where and things like that. But it's a very worthwhile project to look into and I applaud Kathy for bringing it forward.
Madam President.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, some of us were here when we had public restrooms and when I came to Erie some fifty years ago, uh, they were in the park and go down underground. And when I was working with Pendelec, I remember they, uh, they poured concrete down in there to block it up. But I don't recall any negative, any murders, any shootings, et cetera. However, times has changed. So, I've seen the good and I'm not going to say bad, but I'm going to say concern. We need to look at this, evaluate it. Councilman Troop has started some research on it. We need to stay with it, see, tell ourselves, how can we make it work? And we may not make it work, but that's the positive attitude we need to take. How can we make it work? And if we can't and we've done everything we possibly can, so be it. But let's not shut the idea down. There's so many factors involved, so many, some that we haven't thought of yet. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to make a comment that, um, I'm, I'm in favor of us collectively working with organizations that are already doing the work and trying to figure out a solution for our unhoused community to have access to a public bathroom. Um, as a young person who once upon a time worked at the McDonald's on Fifth and State, we had a lot of unhoused community and members of the community who went to McDonald's to use the bathroom, whether it was during the festivities that we were having or just because they had nowhere else to go. So, I look forward to trying to find a happy medium solution for everyone, but I do know that the city just financially cannot take this on and we do not have the means to be able to afford security or maintenance or upkeep, but we support organizations that are working to find this solution for our community members.
Call the vote.
Madam President.
Yes Kathy?
Um, it's also just not for the downtown area. I've been in discussion with, um, a person from the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network and they're having issues in their little Italy, uh, neighborhood area where they are and, um, some, um, some parks need them as well. So, I, I am thankful for the collaboration that could come and what possible, um, solutions that will come up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. Resolution passes ye seven na zero. Resolution number six, sponsored by council member Troop, seconded by council member Witherspoon, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the mayor and director of finance are hereby authorized and directed to sign the amended grant agreement between the city of Erie and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the following, Erie Loop Bike Way, Green Garden Boulevard, Boulevard. The total award granted to the city is four hundred and twenty-eight thousand fifty-six dollars. Discussion?
I just wanted to clarify on that because, uh, that's going to, that's a time sensitive matter where it needs to be done quickly, so the resolution was the most expedient way to do it. It'll still need to be settled by ordinance and I expect to see the ordinance moving forward with the exceptions for parking. Just, just wanted to clarify that for anyone reading the, uh, agenda particularly closely with concerns on this particular issue.
Any other discussion?
Well said, sir. Good job.
Call the vote.
Madam President.
Yes Kathy?
Um, I am for it, but I do want to resolve those parking issues because if that would have happened on my street, um, everyone would be up in arms because parking is so needed on the streets and when you live in a house, you just expect that you can park on your street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Go ahead. Council member.
In regards to the, um, Green Garden Project, um, we've been, we've been, we have been listening to the people around Green Garden, I felt like. Um, but I've seen other parts of the city that got bike lanes and I'm not sure that we gave them the same here, so that on other sides of town. So, I want to make sure, you know, if we are putting bike lanes on other sides of town like Fairmont for example, I'm not sure there was any discussion. Let's make sure that we're giving everybody the same respect when it comes to things on their side of town as we give other parts of town. Just make everybody feel like they have a voice, they're all citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, of course I agree with Councilman Troop and I mentioned this in caucus that, uh, no bike lane should ever have gone on Parade Street for any reason, but none of the folks were asked if they wanted it or not and I have observed some close call with kids on a bike that's too close to the traffic lane and not riding, you know, bike lane only looks maybe a foot or two and they're just too close. It scares me every day. And now we, you know, we had the e-bike, they not riding in the bike lane, they in the street. Is it a bike? Is it a small motor vehicle? Do they have insurance? Do they have license? We have some work to do when we talk about bike lanes.
Let's not forget the people in French probably haven't been talked to either and they're going to make up some, some kind of lines there. I haven't heard much about that one.
Yeah, I, I would agree that whatever we're doing for the community has to have community input and involvement and as someone who grew up on Fifth and Wallace and Parade, those, the Parade Street bike lane just appeared and I was maybe ten or eleven when it happened. Um, so, we definitely have to do better when we're changing the whole makeup of the city layout because we have a lot of, um, community members who don't speak English as their primary language and then the communication barrier, the same with the parking meter situation. We have a lot of lack of, you know, technical support and we have to do better.
Communication once again is the key. Open back and forth.
Any other discussion?
Call for the question.
Voting on the resolution, council members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon and Flores. Resolution passes ye seven na zero. Madam President, this takes us to committee reports.
Oh, um, I know committee assignments were finally hashed out on Thursday the twelfth, so I don't believe council members have reports, but go for it. We could start with Ed Brzezinski and move our way down.
Believe it or not, I do.
Oh, okay.
First of all, we have to welcome, uh, Jason Saylor as our new Director of Public Works. He was appointed, I think, yesterday in fact. So, uh, he's going to hit the ground running, he's been around for a while, he's a pretty sharp guy, so he'll take us well, well into the next weeks and years. Uh, that being said, I look forward to being in the liaison to those folks. The other one is Port Authority. Uh, Lamar is leaving us for greener pastures, I guess, so, uh, stay tuned. I don't know what the next, uh, appointment will be or who's going to be there, if it'll be a, a national search or whatever, but, uh, I'm sure the folks down there, they'll make sure that they, they get the right people. Thank you. Oh, one other thing, I got in trouble. You guys think I'm perfect, I know it, but what I, what I could sworn in last week, two weeks ago, uh, I didn't thank anybody. I mentioned Aaron Sismariski, the attorney, whose mom was Stephanie Dimitrovich, the retired judge. Like admitted, I forgot to mention his dad who played football for me at prep, Ron Sismariski, Esquire. So, I stand corrected on that one. Uh, people ask me why I didn't thank my wife. I thank her every single day, every, every morning and every night. Uh, so, she told me she was okay, so I'm okay with that too. Thank you.
Hey, what's up with all your authorities? Everybody keeps quitting on you. It's the second one in a year.
I know.
Um, I've got the, uh, planning department and, uh, yesterday we had a, uh, planning commission meeting. We've had kind of a backlog with the short-term rental issue happening in the zoning hearing board in the R one areas, so a number of people from the, um, zoning hearing board were at the planning meeting to offer their, uh, constructive criticism of the ordinance that we passed last year. Um, the backlog has, uh, it's, I'm just getting caught up on it now, so I've, I was, uh, communicating with a couple members from the zoning hearing board and a couple members from the planning commission and I met with, uh, Jake earlier today from, uh, zoning to, to chat with some of their concerns, but I'm pretty excited, uh, this year to address some, uh, pretty progressive policies that the planning commission is asking us to look at regarding zoning, which, I mean, most of those policies are seventy years old at this point, uh, from the, from the fifties when you first started getting into some, some segregated housing type issues. So, I'm looking forward to being able to address the, the suggestions that the, uh, planning commission brought forward in November as I get caught up on that and, um, and found that to be a really productive meeting yesterday. So, that's it for mine.
Thank you.
Madam President?
It, it doesn't matter. Go ahead. Do you want to go?
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I want to thank the community that came out in support of the decision that the mayor made based on qualifications and the love of the city. You need to know whether you wanted me here or not, I'm here to represent you regardless. I am one of the seven representatives and when you come to me for help, I'm going to be there for you. That's my job. You have a right to voice your opinion any way you feel, but accept defeat. All of those who are athletes, we know how to accept defeat. We don't like it, but we accept it. Many folks call, text, email, ask me if I seen or read the article that was in this paper written by a former councilperson. I told them, no, I didn't. I told them, no, I didn't read it. I know about it. So they told me about it. I said, "It's not gonna change the end run." I said, "We don't score a touchdown anyway." It's not about hating, dislike. If you look at all the times I ran, I had thirteen thousand votes or more. Led the ticket once over the great Mario Bagnone. So the people put me here. And it took one vote to get me here for two years. One of our council people, he, uh, said, "All I report on is basketball." I thank God that it was said tonight how many lives I've saved in basketball. But what he don't know is that basketball saved my life. Because if it wasn't for basketball, I may have been a statistic. That's right. I grew up being a gangbanger. And I thank Erie, who slowed me down, who made me think, made me see that there's a better life than Newark, New Jersey. My job is to keep kids alive. I have Caucasians constantly telling me, "Mel, you know why you're on council?" I say, "I do the best I can for the city." No, you're there to represent your people. I said, "But everybody's my people. I dislike nobody unless they attack me personally." And I've said this publicly before. If you don't attack me and you don't attack my family, I'm good. I can live with it. But if you do, there's always a part of New Jersey still in me. Some people say, uh, in my community, "Oh, man, you, you close with the police." Yes, I am. Good folks to be close to. Because I'm gonna call them when I need them. That's why I didn't offer any cuts. And that was said, "Well, Mel didn't offer any cuts." Mel's smart, because I know you're gonna try to cut every damn thing in the budget. I'm not cutting police. I'm not cutting fire. I'm not cutting public work. That's what the citizens pay for. Yes, we have some bad policemen. Every city does. But we're working on it. Of course, the, uh, the dude is old. I started to do something today. I said, "No." I said, "They think I'm old because I got a gray beard." I started to diet today. I, I ran out of time. So those who told me, they know I'm gonna have fun with things. I was gonna diet, diet. That'll make me younger. I guess. I love making people laugh. I work with people. Let me tell you what I did today. In the drugstore waiting, lady, two daughters, they wanted something. Mom didn't have the money. I went to the mother. I said, "Could I bless him with five dollars?" She said, "Sir, you don't have to do that." I said, "I know." I said, "But can I bless him?" She said, "Yeah." And the oldest one said, "Give me." I said, "No, no, no, no. You gotta ask her if you can accept it from me, because you don't know me." If you, if she wasn't here and I offered you five dollars, you should start screaming and running. What did I do? I taught those two ladies not to accept something from a stranger. Is that part of city council? Well, I have a title, so yes, it is. It's about helping people all the time, every day. I'm gonna continue to run the league, no doubt. That man Roosevelt Benjamin, he will run the West Side Bayfront this summer. I'm putting him in total charge. I'm going back out a little bit. I'll still have my hands in it. See, as long as I'm on council, I can watch the money. But, young man, I know when to hand it over, but don't force me to hand it over when it's not ready. I have two hundred, three hundred people watching the league. Nobody got shot. Nobody brought guns. And I asked the leaders, I said, "I ain't looking no trouble. I don't want no trouble." But everything's cool? They say, "Mr. Spoon, we ain't gonna start no stuff." They didn't say "stuff," but you know what I mean. "We ain't gonna start no stuff up here. This is for the kids." That's a safe haven. It saved my life. It turned my life around. So all the naysayers, what I have for you is simple. I'm gonna love you, and there ain't nothing you can do about it. Because I might need you, and you might need me. The reason I, I've taken this much time, because it was necessary to lay it out on the table. I had folks in the audience that had told me, "Spoon, don't let those folks get to you. Don't, don't respond, hollering, hooping and hollering and carrying on." They said, "Today, you the toughest. You won the race. Don't worry about the hair. He gonna keep running." I said, "Okay." But I have to say hello to four people who are watching from afar. Larry Hazen, New Jersey Boxing Commissioner, Boxing Hall of Famer. He did Ali's fight, Frazier's fight, oh nine. Ronald Jones, South Carolina, high school basketball player, went to school in the South, All-American. Terry Mitchell, still in New Jersey, retired teacher, Hall of Famer. And Victor Morton, watching from Alamo, California. Vic, probably the richest of all of us. He worked for the federal government. He can go anywhere he wants. And not one foreign government can touch him. That's how much power he has. And they also said, "Spoon, don't let them bring Newark out there. Leave Newark in Newark." And I have, and I will, because I have Erie Community, my community, saying to me, "We got your back." Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, uh, I don't know if I can follow that up. I don't know.
Do your best, Councilmember Troop. Give us your report, the best you can.
Uh, I don't have a formal report today. I will have one next time, but I do want to say, um, I want to give a couple of quotes, um, I think are appropriate. Because, um, and I'm gonna use, um, most people know I have a sports background. I was a part of one of Erie's most successful city teams in history. And I see, uh, one of my opponents out there, who also was a city councilperson before, he's also a brother, though. I see one of my teammates out there, second row. And I see one of the guys who carried on a tradition that we started in the first row. You know, for three years in high school, we lost. We were really, really super talented. I mean, we, we had a lot of talent. And my first year at Central High School was the first year they combined Academy and Tech. And we had a lot, I mean, a lot of talent. But we were very selfish. And everybody was out for themselves. And all this talent was getting beat by teams that didn't have as much talent. And I remember sitting in lunch with some of my guys that were gonna be seniors that next year. You know, we, before that year, we were the type of guys that, as long as we scored a touchdown, we really didn't care if we lost. Like, there was people on the team who were like, "As long as I look good, you know, I don't care if we lost or not. As long as I scored, or as long as I carried the ball so many times," or whatever. You know, or, "I ain't gonna play hard today because they didn't give me the ball," or that kind of stuff, you know? So I remember when we finally got fed up with losing. And we decided in lunch one day, like, "Next year, we don't care who scores, who gets the credit. All we want to see at the end is that we won." And I think when we come together like that in this room, when we know that we're all working for the same purpose, for the city of Erie, and now for something personal, because I play with those type of guys that, all they were out for was for themselves, in personal glory, I'm out for team victory. That felt much better. People still talking about that season thirty years, from thirty years ago. Because people decided to put aside their differences. They're selfish. They want for, you know, personal gain, and decided they wanted to win as a team. Um, Helen Keller said, "Alone, we can do so little, but together, we can do so much." I mean, she, she had no sight that she could see what a lot of people can't. I'm, I'm honored to be on the same stage as Mel Witherspoon. Okay, and I already, I said enough about that last week. You know how, how I feel about you as a, as a, as a person. I also have a lot of admiration for, um, Susannah Faulkner, who's out there. Um, she did a good job last year. She really did. She put, I think, I think she really worked hard at this. Um, I think you do have a bright future in this, if you can, and I know you will continue with it. And, um, I'm sure Mel's the type person that if you ever, if Suzanne or whoever had any questions, although they might have, were going for the same position at one time, he'd be glad to help. So, I mean, I was, I'm honored to have served with both of you. Ancient Chinese proverb I want to share, it says, "If you have an elderly person at your home, it's like having a golden treasure at your home." So, and also says, "Youth is the hope of the future." So, and now we have the golden treasure, and then Susannah, we have the hope of the future. So hopefully, we can bring that all together. We can win together. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll allow the council members on Zoom to report if they have a report.
Madam President, um, I do, I do not have a report. At this time, and I assure everybody that this was probably the last time that I say so quiet. I do apologize for being on Zoom. I had a COVID exposure in the house. I wanted to take extra precaution and not share that kind of love everywhere. And then from here on out, you'll get to hear my voice a lot more, so I apologize in advance.
Thank you. Councilmember Kathy Shaw?
Hi, thank you, Madam President. Um, I hope my council colleagues will mind when I, um, go to meetings that they might be in charge of as far as, um, the, uh, committee reports and things like that. But I also went to the city planning meeting, and Jackie Spry shared, um, a sharepoint that I thought would be nice if she could share that with council members in mind about the goals that, um, they would like to see happen in the future and what they are currently working on. I want to thank the Cursey family for their contribution, the fire department, and, um, definitely a blessing and to invitation to anyone else who loves Erie as much as they did, as they do, to, um, donate money to our city in a different area assigned to the fire department or what have you. Um, I'm sure, um, we would appreciate that. I, um, went to constituents' meeting, uh, last night for a while, and it was nice. Um, on the west side, that someone had cleared the entire sidewalk. And, uh, I had, uh, needed to walk. I parked more than a block away. And so I had no trouble whatsoever walking on the sidewalk. So, thank you for people helping people out, because I saw it be cleared. And they did the entire block on the one side of the street. So that's, that's just totally awesome. And, um, I want to address, um, the retirement of Glenn Sedin, um, this past Friday. He, uh, was an original security hired, um, there's two security companies. And he was, um, with us from day one. And was an integral part of communicating with, uh, the, um, safety department about, um, city hall issues with security coming in and, and things like that. So, thank you to Glenn. And I want to thank my council colleagues for, uh, passing the resolution, and I look forward to setting up study sessions. And anyone who has an interest in being a part of the discussion and can contribute as well financially, um, we would definitely, um, love to have you, um, be a part of this collaboration. Because that's how people, um, I believe, get things done, um, when we all work together. Um, and it's not just a downtown issue. A person had emailed me saying they wouldn't have this problem if, um, there was security. Well, um, I did see many people use the restroom, um, going through security, so, um, the issue, though, is to that security, um, and city hall closes at four-thirty. But when I go to a city, um, I see signs that will say, "Public restrooms," when I'm out and about. And, uh, so just last week, I drove someone to, uh, the food hall because, um, they were not going to use it. Uh, and it's important that there's a sign out there. Wherever people, um, have public restrooms, um, maybe even at the library, post a sign outside the library, "Public restrooms," or "Job and standing," um, "Public restrooms." Where, um, people walk out and about. Where people walk out and about, they would know that there are public restrooms available. And because I have talked about this before with Public Works, I do know we're going to talk about issues, about how some people abuse it. So we do need to come up with solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that leaves me. Before we move on, I had a, well, the last two weeks have been a lot of moving pieces, but I'm happy that the appointment process has been handled. I had a meeting with the towing and parking appeals hearing council. We were hearing a lot of feedback that the lack of technical support is causing some of our aging residents a lot of difficulty. Those that don't have smartphones, those that carry quarters in their car to pay the meters are having a lot of issue. So hopefully, we can try to see what happy medium we can find. I know that right now, the app only allows people to have a two-hour window. So we're hopefully gonna be talking, maybe, on extending that to a four-hour process. That way, those who are inside the courthouse or don't have access to their phone will at least have a bigger window to prevent those $30 tickets. I also had a meeting at the Chamber on January 12th at 9:30, just to go over the transition of power that occurred on the city level, in the county level, and to know what they're working on going forward. They gave us a little update that there were lots of people in town, out of towners for this weekend. This past weekend, there was lots of things going on downtown at the convention center, at the Warner, and just a lot of things to bring people in foot traffic to businesses. So that's always great to hear, especially during our winter months. We all got assigned our committees as of Thursday last week. So we hopefully will have nice reports for everyone going forward. And on our next council meeting, we will be doing a group council photo to update our city website for all members of council. So that is something to look forward to. We've been getting a lot of reports that everyone doesn't look exactly how they should on the city website. So we'll get some updated headshots as well and just look like a unified front, because working together to move our city forward is our greatest hope. And we are successful when we look like we're working to move our city in the right direction. So that'll be great going forward. Do we have any reports from the, there's no treasurer here. So I'm gonna go to the solicitors?
No report.
Okay. The administration?
Yeah, this will be very brief. Just have three items I want to mention quickly. First is, Ed, I really look forward to meeting. I hope we do it this week with the people from Green Garden and talking about it. You know, we've put together 16 exceptions. And we really listened to them. I think we've put a lot of good things in it. And I'm hoping that can make them comfortable and we can move forward with this very quickly. I appreciate that. I think you're all aware, I just wanted to make sure. You know, we got a little over $3 million designated earlier this week to buy five new trucks for garbage delivery. And they'll all be electrical-powered, so they won't be gas-powered. They'll be much, much better for our environment. You know, it's amazing to me how Erie's climate has changed since I was a kid growing up here. When I was a kid growing up, before Thanksgiving, the snow would start. And it would keep coming beyond the ground until the end of March, early April. Now, we finally had any snow so far this year. We just finally got some. So it's different. And to me, that indicates a major change in our environment, which we should be concerned about. Last, but certainly not least, I want to thank Mel Wooderspoon for all he's done. He had a big impact on my life. When I was a young kid in high school, I wanted to become a basketball player and be good at it. And the way I learned how to do that is I would go watch Gannon games with Mel playing. And then I would go back to our gym and I would pretend I was Mel when I was playing basketball. And it did, it made me much better, and I appreciate that a lot. And one last thing, Mel, I have to tell you is, you know, I had a beard for a lot of years when I was younger. And my wife loved it. People liked it. But as it turned gray, my wife didn't like the beard anymore because it scratched her when I would kiss her. So now, every once in a while, I grow one for a month or so. But that's about as long as I'm allowed to keep it. And so unfortunately, I don't have a beard like you do today. Thanks very much.
Mr. Mayor, that's pewter, not gray.
Pewter, okay.
Alrighty. I believe that takes us to the end of the meeting. Meeting adjourned.